I think we're well said. You guys outside? You outside, Patrick? Okay. Can I have your attention, please? We're gonna be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the planning board for June 4th, 2018. Tonight, we do have a, um, three matters on, one being a rezoning petition and two pre-application matters. The first matter is the rezon petition of 39 Plymouth Street. A proposed zoning amendment was submitted to extend the existing institutional mixed-use zoning district to include an area of 39 Plymouth Street. The subject property is presently zoned traditional multifamily zone. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, my name is Tercio Chavez. I'm the owner of the property of 39 Plymouth Street. And, uh, yeah, as you know, that property has been, it has a mixed use. And I hereby was requesting the all-inclusive institutional zoning for that property.
Anything else you'd like to say, sir? Not at this moment unless you guys have any questions. I mean... Not at this time. Um, okay. You don't want to say anything? That's fine. Okay. So then we'll do alternate over, see if anybody here in the public wants to speak in regards to the matter. Okay. Anybody here to see if they want to speak in favor of the rezoning? Anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? Anybody in opposition to rezoning?
Good evening. My name is John Hamlet. I live at 495 Varnum Avenue, and I am co-chair of the Pawtucketville Citizens Council. A couple items. Apparently, this is a boarding house or a rooming house. It is not, however, a registered rooming house or boarding house. There are only 19 registered boarding houses. This is not one of them. As you are aware, the issue of stealth dorms, where single and multifamily houses are being converted into rent-by-the-room facilities for students and others, is a real concern. It's been discussed at city council and was the subject of a city council subcommittee, zoning subcommittee meeting on May 22nd. At that meeting, the zoning subcommittee did direct DPD and the Law Department to develop a new set of regulations, zoning regulations, for the city of Lowell that would address this problem. In the discussion about stealth dorms, the problems, and this is, this is not unique to Lowell or to Massachusetts. This is a problem that we can find nationwide. Google stealth dorms, and there's a plethora of information about it. But some of the problems associated with converting single or multifamily homes into illegal boarding houses include traffic volume and parking problems. The best example of that would be this property. If you drive by there tonight, you'll see all the cars parked up on the grass and sideways and all sorts of, that creates unsafe walking and cycling conditions for students and for neighborhood children. There are widespread noise disturbances with stealth dorms, overflowing trash and poor sanitation conditions because they are not registered as multifamily units. They use the existing city disposal system. Overburdened sewage systems is a problem. They have dangerous living conditions. And then, in the case of Pawtucketville and other neighborhoods, we see and often see a change in the character of the neighborhood. And I've been before this board a number of times, and I believe we've made the case for the importance of neighborhood character. There is also indication that it lowers surrounding property values. The conclusion by the zoning subcommittee of the city council is that we need to better understand how to enforce these types of regulations, and we need new zoning laws. So at this point in time, again, I would encourage the planning board to consider that this may be before you prematurely, and that in a matter of eight days or 10 days, we may have proposals for new zoning regulations that specifically address this situation. Any questions for me?
None at this time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your input. Anybody else would like to speak? Take your time.
Hello. My name is Judy Davidson. I live at 45 Phoebe Avenue, which is in East Pawtucketville, right behind the campus. I've lived there since 1999. It's been a great little home. I've recently become aware that our neighborhood is under siege, really, from people who are trying to set up these stealth dorms. We get, we regularly get letters from people who say, "I will buy your house for cash." They want to move into this neighborhood because there are students, increasing number of students on campus, and they need housing. I'm not against that. I'm a faculty member at UMass Lowell, and I have been since I came here in 1999. I'm very proud of our campus, and I love our students. So I want them to have good housing, safe housing. But I am very concerned that this kind of housing, in which each person has a separate room, a separate contract, and there's really no oversight of the house, could be very dangerous. It has the possibility of being really an unkept property. But I am also concerned that the character of the neighborhoods in which there's a mixture of how, of different kinds of housing is going to be destroyed. And I was recently in Boulder, Colorado, a town that's growing very rapidly, much like Lowell with a student population, and the little houses in the, near the campus that are like mine are worth a fortune. And that people are very concerned about saving this kind of property now, to keep the mixture, so that the community will be a place that has adults in it who want to keep track of things, as well as the students who are there. So I ask you to think carefully about the future of the community. I'm totally for the university and for supporting students, but I want to make sure that we do it carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else? Okay. At this point in time, we'll turn it over to any board members have any comments or questions?
I have one, Mr. ...
Sure. Mr. Lockhart?
Director, Patrick, Mr. Hamlet brought up the fact that the new zoning regulations that would specifically address this issue may be forthcoming in the near future. Do you know anything about that? And if you do, can you give us a little background?
I mean, I do know that was part of the discussion. I don't know the status of it, to be honest. I don't, I can't really say when we could expect it, for sure.
It is being looked at.
Yep, as directed by the zoning subcommittee.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Lockhart. Yeah, Mr. Snetsky?
Go ahead. I agree that stealth dorms, you know, are a detriment to the neighborhood character. And in this particular situation, although I have, you know, some empathy for the property owner, this is a self-inflicted situation. The permit was allowed to lapse in April of 2004.
Yes, sir.
The zoning changed in December of 2004, and had the permit not been allowed to lapse, you would have been grandfathered. In addition, the property was shut down last year for code violations. If all of these things had not taken place, we wouldn't need to be having this conversation because your property would have been grandfathered.
Yeah.
And for that reason, I have a difficult time supporting a change at this time.
Nothing is gonna change on the, on the, I've been living on that property for 20 years, and I've been on that for 17 years I've done that. And nothing has changed, nothing is added to it. All the inspections for the fire department, the building department, they were okay. They inspected last year on September.
However...
And it's got all the fire sprinklers, all the fire alarms and everything.
Sir...
Yes.
However, again, this chronology of your permitting, if you had renewed the permit in April of 2004, when it expired, you would have been grandfathered when the, when any zoning changed, which I believe took place in December of 2004. And, you know, and it would have been a non-issue. On top of which, the violations which took place requiring the shutdown of that property by the building department in 2017 is also a self-inflicted wound. So although I have empathy for your situation, I...
All those issues have been resolved.
But they were created by inaction on your part, and therefore, I see no mitigating circumstance to support this change. That's my position.
The issues that were concerned with the fire department was with the smoke detectors that were not carbon monoxide, so we changed them right away. But the previous year, they had, the fire department went there, checked all the sprinkles, all the fire alarms, and everything was okay. But they, they made me change it, and everything's been changed. That was the issue. And the other violation was some trash on the inside of the house. It wasn't on the outside. And everything's been cleaned up.
But you were operating without a permit from, since April of 2004.
No, no, I was not operating at that time because I was fixing the, there was a lot of painting. Everything's been painted outside. I painted inside. And there was a lot of work that I put on that house. But it's not that I is gonna change anything like on the neighborhood like this gentleman's were saying.
But sir, if you had renewed your permit when it expired...
I wasn't aware.
...in April of 2004...
Uh-huh.
...and maintained the property properly, this conversation wouldn't need to be taking place because you would be grandfathered in the use that you're requesting. Those, those are self-inflicted situations. Those are not the problem of the city. Those are your problems. And for us, asking us now to, you know, make a change in the zoning, which I don't believe is in keeping with the intent of the zoning code for the neighborhood character, I personally will not support that.
It seems weird to me that, that I'm not gonna do any change. I understand that the laws have changed, but it's not that I'm gonna change anything on the building, anything on the inside, as long as if it, if it's okay with the building department and if it's okay...
It has essentially been an illegal use since December of 2004.
I'm leaving on the property. I'm, it's a...
Oh, I'm sorry. That, that's my position, sir.
Mr. Melvin?
I, the fundamental thing here is this is a rezoning. He's asking us to extend one zone into another. And whether he's, what he's gonna do with the property is a whole other thing. My concern is that it's a further eating away at this neighborhood by university-associated facilities. So I am opposed to any more encroachment in the TMF district at this time. And I would defer to have the city council subcommittee deal with the, the issue of boarding houses or whatever, stealth rooming houses or dormitories. And I would recommend that this go back to the city council with the recommendation that they should defer action on this until the subcommittee comes up with a plan for how they're gonna deal with the supposed stealth dormitories here. But I can't agree with this rezoning at this point, just on the basis it's a further encroachment into this residential neighborhood by a non-residential use that is being used, the institutional zone is being used to increase the amount, or legalize the decreased amount of residential units, whether they're rooms or whatever, using that institutional zone. And I am opposed to that.
Thank you, Mr. Malovich. Mr. Fichette?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request to rezone a parcel of land. And when considering a rezone or zoning a particular area, it can't be done in an isolated manner, and it can't be done in a piecemeal fashion. And the city's master plan called for a understanding the unique character of Pawtucketville. We've got East Pawtucketville. We've got the density of the residential units there. You have the business zones. You have the university. You have residential homes. You have West Pawtucketville. You have the waterfront. So what happened is we developed a Pawtucketville master plan. And based on the master plan that was developed, we really, we walked the neighborhoods. We actually drove around in a bus in the neighborhoods and looked at the characteristics of each individual neighborhood. And we have multiple uses that are very close to each other in East Pawtucketville. And the lines were specifically drawn for specific reasons, okay? And to come back and piecemeal the, the zoning that was established, I think is very poor planning on the city's part. And I wouldn't even, there's two different issues. The whole idea of stealth dorms and regulating them is different than a rezone even. And I don't think this should even go back to the subcommittee. I watched the subcommittee meeting. And by the way, in this Pawtucketville master plan, it talks about forming databases. It talks about code enforcement. This was in 2006. Here we are in 2018. Nothing has really been accomplished as a result of this, unfortunately. And now we're, we're talking about it today. So from my perspective, what's before this planning board is a request to rezone this parcel. If you look at the zoning map, it is a very crisp, clear, straight line where the institutional zone meets the, the TMF zone. And the whole idea of that as well is that it affects the opposite homes on Riverside Street. And I'm gonna read to you from the Pawtucketville master plan relative to these types of situations and what was specifically done. Now, it says "Traditional residential districts, traditional multifamily TMF, traditional two-family TTF, traditional single-family TSF, extend outwards from the commercial centers of East Pawtucketville. The boundaries of these districts are drawn to reflect the established character of the individual blocks that make up the neighborhood. For example, the streets extending from the UMass Lowell campus to Mammoth Road, commercial area, and the area immediately north of Riverside Street, east of the campus, are zoned TMF to protect the traditional neighborhood of multifamily buildings." The whole purpose of it, a lot of thought went into this. The, under land use and zoning, it says "To preserve the character of Pawtucketville's developing residential districts and to support appropriate development in commercial and institutional districts that enhances their attractiveness and utility while respecting the character of abutting residential blocks." That was the reason for the clear crisp line. You start to change that zoning, now this becomes the only institutional zone out onto Plymouth Street.
What the...
And then that encroaches further into the residential neighborhood. It says Pawtucketville is a unique blend of residential, institutional, and business districts. Each district has its own flavor and set of uses, and therefore, its own set of design standards for development. A delicate, a delicate balance has developed within Pawtucketville to support these varied uses. Very delicate balance we've got over here. We've got multiple uses that, that abut each other and can have an extreme detrimental, detrimental effect on one area versus another. The institutional use starts to cater to the university. We're trying to keep that in a fairly contained area. And this, it may seem minor to you, but this now creates a situation where now the institutional zone runs into Plymouth Street, which does not currently allow to have happen.
It's already there.
So it...
The building that is right to my left, I mean, to my right-hand side is the nanotechnology building, the...
And that is within, that is within, sir, that is within the institutional district, which is, which is...
Yeah, but you're saying that that was the only one on the street, right?
Clearly laid out on the, on the institutional zone. In the university, unfortunately or fortunately, does not have to comply with our zoning.
Yeah.
So from that perspective, we have control. This is what we have control over.
Okay.
And so from that perspective, I, I would look to give a negative recommendation to the city council. I believe there's two different issues regarding the code enforcement and the stealth dorms that currently exist in the TMF zones, the TMU zones. They're currently a situation that the neighborhood has been dealing with for quite some time. My concern is, is that we enable that by increasing the, the footprint of the institutional zone. So from my perspective, a lot of thought went into the, the boundaries that have been established in this particular area because of the delicate balance that exists. And I would not be looking to piecemeal any changes in the zoning as a result of that, in the zone, in the established zones for this particular purpose. So from that perspective, Mr. Chairman, certainly my thought would be to send this to the council with a negative recommendation for the request. Thank you.
The, the property is already surrounded on three sides by the institutional zoning. I don't think it's gonna affect any of the communities around the area. The, all the things that, it won't be stealth dorms. It will be regulated. I mean, I would do, I'll comply with whatever laws you have for, for dorms or for...
The addresses on the other side, they're not on Plymouth Street, correct?
Whose address? My address?
Nope. You said the building to the right of you.
Yeah, the whole building is on, I mean, if you can see...
What's the address on that?
But it is taking the whole...
I'm asking a question. Do you know the address on it?
I have no idea where the address is.
Is it Plymouth Street?
Uh...
No.
In, but the steel, the building is right to the next.
None of them are Plymouth Street, right?
So would it, if I changed the address to the other side of the street, would then I'll be complying?
That's a simple question. You're trying to rezon a partial land.
Yes, uh-huh.
We're looking at the surrounding boundaries, trying to compare what's in the zone. So you can change any address you want. The fire department's not gonna let you do it anyways. So that's not gonna happen. So that's not going to happen. Because we keep odd and even for a reason, right? Right side, left side for emergency vehicles?
I'm sorry?
We keep address numbers on the streets for a reason.
Okay.
Odd side, even side for emergency vehicles. So what you're asking us to do here is you want us to make the only, this would be the only lot on Plymouth Street to change the zone. You're not at the top of the street. You're not at the bottom of the street. You're in the middle of the street, right? You're not at a corner lot.
Yeah, next to the university. I mean, I'm surrounded to the right by the university there.
I know, I was there. I was there there tonight. I was there Thursday night for about 20 minutes. And you have the university's there, then you, then the other house down the other street.
Exactly.
So what you want is, if you want a corner lot, it makes sometimes the request a little easier. But since you're in the middle of the street, okay? And if we rezone this, you'd be the only house on Plymouth Street to have the institutional zone, correct?
Yeah, I understand. But the position where this particular building is, it's invaded us already inside the boundaries of the university.
It invaded you, so if we allow you, we're going to let it invade everybody else, using your words.
It seems like you guys are forcing me to move out because the university...
We're not forcing you to do anything. You come, if you come here...
I was trying to buy my property.
You asked for a zone change, okay? If we allow the zone change, any institutional use can go in there. We have no idea what's going to go in there. No clue whatsoever.
I'm not going to change anything on that.
Sir?
Yes.
We've seen this argument before. You come in, you change it to institutional, and three weeks later you sell it and somebody goes out and builds it. I've been sitting here for a long time. I've seen it happen at least five or six times. When the people come in and says, "We have no intention of selling in less than 30 days after we've approved a zone change," it's up to them. We cannot change it back. So the question is not what's going to be on the property. It's the question, does this zoning feel allowed in this neighborhood, period? We have no control. We'll go in there when institutional goes in unless you come in here and need some type of site review. So once you ask for the zoning, it opens up all criteria to the industrial zone. There's no way we can say, yes, we'll give you the zoning if you keep it the way it is now. We're not allowed to do that. You come and ask for a zone change, if we allow it, then anything industrial zone could come in here. And if required site plan approval, they have to meet the criteria under the zoning. So it doesn't say, I'm going to put in the zone, I'm going to change the zoning to industrial, but I'm going to keep it this way and that's the way I want it. We've had that argument just right down the street from where you are now at Bicky's Garage. When they come in, everybody was in favor of Bicky's there, but they didn't want to change the zoning. They said, "We're going to keep it there, keep it there, keep it there, keep it there." Well, everybody said the same thing. They can sell and do everything else they want to it. So the only question is, you know, if you want to put an institutional zone in there, we have no control what goes in there ever after. So the only question is, do we allow you to have the institutional zone, which would be on Plymouth Street, and it'd be the only house lot on Plymouth Street that's institutional zone? That's the question in front of us this evening. Okay?
Okay.
That's what we're voting on. Not what you're going to keep there, because we have no control of that. You can do, you could just say, "I'm not going to do it. I'm going to put something else in the institutional wise," and then don't, and then come back before us. We have no control of it. Whether you intend it to keep it or not, you change your mind overnight, have you sold it or whatever. So once we, the only changes changes, it stays, it gets changed again regardless of what your intentions are in the future.
Well, I thought that...
We have no control of it.
Having such a big building next to me, right on the side, it would not affect the planning of the community around the area. I think...
And I understand that. You're entitled to that. Okay. So anything else? Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? If not, what's the request of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we recommend to the City Council to deny the rezoning request.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion to the main, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote, cheers. So the motion is to deny the request. Do you have a scheduled meeting, sir, for the City Council meeting?
Uh, yes, I think we have, what's it, the City...
Yeah, I think he's on the next, the first meeting in June, so I think that's...
Twenty-seven. So we're only a recommending body. Our recommendation holds no weight. The Council can do what they, what they feel is right. It just comes by procedural, how they set up in our regulations. Any rezoning goes to the Council first, comes to us, then back to them. So it's totally within their hands. So regardless of what we say, it's totally up to the Council. So we wish you well. Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir. Moving along on the agenda, next matter we have is a pre-application, site plan review, and special permit for Seven Industrial Ave., East, excuse me. The following has been requested that the Planning Board provide a preliminary review of the proposed project at the above-listed address. This is not a planning, this is not a public hearing. The Planning Board has made no decision on anything that happens, signed any future guarantees. The, can we hear from the applicant, please?
Hello, I'm Bob Marison, Executive with Patriot Care. First of all, our attorney who represents us normally in matters like this in the Commonwealth and other markets couldn't be here. He was, he had federal jury duty today, so he was stuck in Boston and couldn't get out in time. So he'll be here for the hearing in a couple of weeks, I can guarantee that. But just as a preamble, I requested the hearing, I know it's not a hearing, I requested this tonight so that, to give you extra opportunities to ask questions that you might have regarding our application. This is going to be the, this will be the first application you will get for a marijuana, adult-use marijuana facility in the city. And I wanted to make sure that you had ample opportunity to consider ours and maybe flesh out any questions that I might need to come back with for that meeting. We, just for a little history, and I know I shared some of this when I, when I came to you when you were considering the zoning about a month ago before, you know, before the, or the ordinance, that is, before the City Council meeting. But just to reiterate, and I'll do this again when we have our, when we have our official hearing, but Patriot Care has been operating at Seven Industrial Avenue East as a medical marijuana dispensary since February of 2016. We actually also operate a medical marijuana cultivation facility on Lincoln Street, corner of Lincoln and Tanner in the city. We are very proud of the fact that in that time that we've been in the city, we've had no issues at all. And, you know, there was a lot of, you know, there's a normal amount of concern people might have, but we've, we've enjoyed a great, great relationship with the city. You know, we've had no issues that we've been, that we've been made aware of. The police have been very happy with the way in which we conduct our operation. The city manager has been happy with the way in which we conduct our operation. We're extremely proud of the fact that between the two facilities, we've created about 100 jobs in the city of Lowell in the last two and a half years. And, you know, that's, that's probably actually more than we had committed to when we got started, and we're very proud of that. And in addition to that, we have been a contributing member of the community through our host agreement that we currently have with the city. The proposal that you have in the application here is to co-locate an adult-use facility with the medical facility, which was specifically, as you know, contemplated in the ordinance that we would be, we would, we would be kind of in a unique position to be able to do that co-location of the, of the facilities. Just to kind of reiterate, kind of what the, in terms of the community impact side of things, as I said, you know, for the last two and a half years, we've enjoyed a great relationship with the city. We've had no issues. As part of the state application process, the state requires us to have a community hearing to discuss our, our plans with the abutters, and there's a certain requirement for that. We had that meeting back at the end of March where we sent notices to every abutter. We put notices in the paper as required, both in Chelmsford and Lowell, because we're right on the border of Chelmsford in that location. And only one person showed up for the meeting, and she didn't have any opposition. And, but we will be going to her, to the Highlands Association meeting again before the actual, before the next Planning Board meeting so that we will be able to, you know, address any questions that, that the neighborhood group had. We actually spoke before the Highlands Association back four years ago, prior to us coming to the zoning board for our special permit to have the dispensary for medical use. And, and that was a very successful meeting, and we were able to explain, explain what our, you know, explain how the operation would run. So, you know, again, we held the community meetings, only one person showed up and, you know, but again, we're, that doesn't mean we stop. I mean, part of our, the way we operate is we try to make sure that the community is aware of what we're doing, and so that's why we reached out to the Highlands Association to meet with them as well. On the security side, again, we've operated without, I'll knock on wood on this, we've operated without any issue. We have a, we have a terrific, state-of-the-art security system. We recently, our VP of Security recently took Superintendent Richardson, Deputy Superintendent Richardson through not only the dispensary facility but also the cultivation facility because they're kind of part and parcel in the center. They're not in the same location, but some of the operations of the dispensary depend on the cultivation center, obviously, and so we wanted to make sure that the deputy superintendent was very comfortable with the way in which that interacts, you know, the transport of product back and forth and how we handle that and so on. And I was told, and I'm sure you'll get your own report from the deputy superintendent as part of this process, but I met with him while he was there and he was very pleased with what he saw. Again, our, our security system is state-of-the-art, and we use it everywhere in the country that we operate, and we were very, very pleased with the way in which it works. As of last week, we've now executed completely our new host agreement with the city, so we have that in place as well. Manager Donahue signed that last week. And that's specific to adult use, so we have that plus the, you know, and it also, but it also contemplates how the two agreements will work together once, once the two programs are merged at the state level later this year. As I offered at the, at the last meeting, you know, there's a lot of, oftentimes there's a lot of mystery around what happens. You know, you might drive by the facility and you might see people going in and out, but you might be wondering, what happens inside there? And I would just reiterate my offer that I made at the meeting last, about a month ago, that if any members of the, of the Planning Board would like to come have a tour, we'd be very happy to give you a tour so you can see what happens when people come in. You know, one of, I know one of the questions that people will, may have, and I'll be happy to answer any of you have tonight, but has to do with, well, you know, what's the parking situation like and how does that work? And it's really, it's really a function, a lot of that's a function of the time it takes for people to come through the facility. We manage that very carefully because for us, it's very important for patients and then eventually adult-use consumers to have a very positive experience. We don't want people waiting, which means that there's more cars in the lot. We want people to move through as quickly as possible, but without them feeling rushed. We want to make sure that they have the time they need to make their decisions. Our average wait time right now is about eight minutes for a medical transaction, meaning that from the time they, we time it from the minute they check in at the front door to the minute they check out at the, at the point-of-sale register, and the average is eight minutes. So we can conclude pretty, you know, we can, we can develop pretty good estimates of what that traffic flow would look like, you know, you know, as we move forward. Adult-use transactions will take a lot less time because we don't have the same requirements from the state to put certain labels on them and to do certain things. So the adult-use transactions will probably take significantly less time, but we don't know exactly what that will look like yet. But putting all that aside, again, I just wanted to make sure we could come tonight. I could come tonight and actually, and answer any questions you might have now. Or if there's anything I need to research before our planet, our hearing, I'd like to know what those are, if possible, and bring back additional information at that
At this point in time, I'll turn over to see if the board members have any questions? Anybody from the board have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, just...
Mr. Fichette?
I'm glad you brought up the parking, because I was there yesterday at 2:00 in the afternoon. So I was surprised at 2:00 on a Sunday afternoon, and there were 16 cars in the, in the parking lot. You have 20 parking spaces allocated. Now, is that 20 additional spaces or that's 20s?
It's, it's, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No.
The 20 is what's sort of stipulated in the lease as a guarantee, but they're not, it's not that we can use as many as, I mean, there's many more than those available in that lot, so it's not a maximum at all. It's really, and what you probably see on the weekend is, you know, during the week our people, and we work this out with our abutter next door, you know, the hotel, and during the week, we, our dispensary staff will park over there and walk over, and they're, and they're fine with that arrangement. But on the weekends, because there's no other cars in the lot, they all park in the lot.
I got that impression. I saw somebody get out with a, something around their neck, identification badge, whatever, so I'm assuming that was an employee.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure it was. I mean, I don't have my badge, my badges in my car, actually, but they either wear it on their neck or on their, on their belt.
But I was surprised to see that many cars on a Sunday afternoon.
Well, still, even still, though, the zoning requires one space per 500 feet. And, you know, we, and the total, the total space that we occupy is 6,000 square feet, but not all of that is dispensary. Let's just say that, you know, under the, the way the ordinance was written, it would require us to have 12 spots, but we have 20 dedicated. We have many more that, we've never really had an issue, even on the days that are busiest days.
I guess one, one of the questions I had is, I don't believe there's probably a lot of data around here as far as what the demand is going to be for a retail shop, you know, so it'll be interesting, interesting to see all that. And I don't know what you're going to sell, whether it's going to be edibles, whether it's going to be, so whether it's going to be somebody, you know, medical, it's, here it is, here's your, their card, and you said eight minutes is you pretty much moving along. Whereas I think of a retail, if there's different options that they have, and I can see somebody in there figuring out, you know, what is it, do I want to get, what do I want to? It just, they could be there a lot longer than the medical marijuana folks. So, again, just, I was surprised. And when I saw the 20 spots, just between now and then, maybe if you can get some additional data on that. And I know in the past, on some projects going before the Zoning Board of Appeals, they've actually put like a six-month review period to see how, how it's going. And it may be a non-issue, you know, it was like the drive-throughs in the pharmacies when they first hit the area and we were concerned about it, and it turned out to be a non-issue. I just, like I said, I think that was, for me, that was eye-opening on a Sunday afternoon to see that many vehicles.
Well, the one thing I would say is that, you hit on something which is, which is interesting. I think what will happen initially may not, won't be what's, what happens at the beginning of the, of time won't be what it'll look like a year from now. And the reason for that is that initially, there'll be, there won't be as many dispensaries open. It's going to take some time. But, you know, the city itself, it contemplates being, you know, being able to accommodate several more dispensaries. Massachusetts in the aggregate will have many, many more dispensaries. And today, there's 26 medical dispensaries open. There'll be over 100 dispensaries open that'll be doing adult use, but that's not going to happen day one. So whatever traffic we would see, if you did a six, I'm, we'd be happy to do a six-month review. In fact, as part of our host agreement with the city, we have a one-year, we have an annual review. So we could, we could, you could tie in with that. I think that would be, make a lot more sense because six months is going to be really short. The first six months might be some disruptions, only be, not, I wouldn't say disruptions.
Well, you're going to be, you're going to be one of the few shops in town and you're right off the highway, convenience spot. So I can just see all of the people in the surrounding area coming in, coming in there, so.
But it would, I mean, it would make a lot of sense, though, to, to wrap that in with, with the annual review that we, we have committed to have with the city to make sure that, you know, we, look, we don't want, we want to be a, we don't want to have a negative impact on the area, and that's, and we've worked very hard not to do that at all, and I think we've been very successful so far.
No, I've heard nothing but positive things. And you've submitted quite a complete package for your pre-application hearing here this evening, or presentation this evening. Like I said, I think that's just something that I think it's incumbent upon us from a, from a site plan perspective to review that. And like I said, I'm questioning whether we have accurate data at this point in time to really fully understand what the impact will be. So, thank you.
Any other board members have any questions? Mr. Snitsky?
Yes, just in general, you know, I think your packet is very comprehensive and, you know, well-done, you know, answers most any of the questions that we might have. But as with any site plan review, we'll be, Patrick, we'll be reaching out to the various departments, and in particular, I would be interested in, you know, the, you know, the traffic engineer's, you know, report, and also, although I know I fully expect it to be positive, you know, but you have the police department report just confirming, you know, the, their observations on, on the plan. You know, other than that, I think, you know, the application is well-submitted.
Well, if I could, if I, I'll, I'll give them a posthumous plug because the original narrative that was, that you have, I mean, we modified it quite a bit, obviously, to, for adult use and for the fact that it's now, it was a site plan review and a special permit, but Attorney Flood, James Flood, did the original work for us. And so we... permit, but Attorney Flood, James Flood, did the original work for us, and so we, we, I wouldn't say we plagiarized totally from his original narrative, but he, he gave us the framework to use that we, that we followed, and it was, and I think he did, you know, he did an amazing job getting that done the first time. So you're seeing some benefit of that, and I'll, I'll give him a little tip of the head on that one, too.
That explains a lot.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any other board members have any questions?
I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead, Rich.
Mr. Fraschette said, because you're looking at a new situation here, and this facility could be one of the first adult-use marijuana establishments in the region, that you should be prepared to walk us through traffic patterns, queuing, how that whole thing is controlled in a detailed way, so that we have enough data to support, you know, a good decision for you critically.
You're talking about inside the facility, the queuing?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
You mean the parking outside, you're saying, or inside?
Parking.
Oh, okay.
Parking and traffic flow, and how you're going to deal with it. That's all I have.
Do you want me to give you something tonight, or you would rather, just come back and...
No, I just want to give you that input so that when you do come back, you'll have
Sure.
something prepared.
Well, you know...
But if you want to address it, that's fine.
I'd be happy to give you a thumbnail now, if you want, as long as, or as short as you want. But I mean, basically, on the outside of the facility, one of the things that we do today, which we're going to, we will enhance, is we currently have a guard, you know, in addition to the whole, all the security measures we have with the cameras, we have a guard on duty at all times that we're open. And the guard's role is to check people at the door before they come in, make sure they at least even have their requisite IDs and cards. But another, and I'll get back to the queue, that part of the queuing in a second, but the other aspect of what the guard is responsible for is actually going out into the parking lot at various frequency to make sure that the people that are out in the lot are not hanging around, and that they're, you know, once they, once they're finished, they leave. But also, when he sees people coming into the lot, he's making sure that people are not barreling in, and that it's, that it's a safe environment for, you know, for others, and also, you know, for other people who'd be around. Not, we haven't made a final decision on this yet, but we'll probably end up having an additional guard when we, once we, once we were to, would start adult use, because we're going to want to make sure, at least, we're going to try that out for some period of time and see whether we need it. But we would want to make sure that that, see, when the guard's at the door, he's not in the lot, so we would want to make sure that we are, that we kind of have that monitoring going on. So people get used to what they need to do when they come in, and if we need additional signage or whatever to keep people coming into the lot at a, at the right rate of speed, you know, we'll do that. But, so, you know, the guards really maintain, help maintain some of that flow. You typically would only see a line at the facility today, when, at the, like, we open at 10:00 AM, and so there's a line at 10:00 AM of, you know, whatever, a handful of people, maybe as many as a dozen, because they're waiting for us to open. Once we open, that line quickly gets in, and you don't see any queuing outside typically, once we get open and after the first 10 minutes of people coming into the facility. So I would not expect that you would see a line kind of coming out the door of the facility. Once they come in, I can take you through the different ways in which they have to prove their identity, but if they're a medical patient, they have to have a medical card issued by the state, plus they're a secondary form of ID. Those patients will be directed towards, towards a set of lines that will be strictly for medical patients. Someone who's an adult-use patient will come in, and anybody who's in line to be an adult-use patient, it'll be like Fenway Park, you know, I even, I get carded at Fenway, and we're going to card everybody, you know, coming into the facility, because we have to prove to the state that, you know, we don't, we just can't afford any, we can't afford any compliance lapses. So everybody who comes in, whether they look as old as me or not, will, will get carded. And they'll go into adult-use lines. Inside the facility, we have 10, currently, we have 10 stations, point-of-sale stations. We'll have to determine how many, they have to be dedicated each day, so if it's going to be five adult-use and five medical, you know, it could shift around, but once you get open for the day, they have to stay either adult-use or medical. So, so we'll see how many lines of each we need initially, and we'll adjust accordingly based on the traffic flow. So when somebody comes in, they'll, you know, a medical patient won't be standing in line behind an adult-use patient, waiting for them to do whatever, or vice versa. The medical patients will have their own line, adult-use will have their own line. And they'll go in and out accordingly, they'll have access to our products. On that basis, there'll be a little difference in terms of what they can get, in the sense that adult-use patients can't get the same kind of edibles that, that medical patients can, but other than that, it's pretty much the same. That's, that's just a real thumbnail. I can get into more detail if you'd like, but...
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Malavich?
Just to add on to that, when you come in with your final, can you show us what spaces are actually available to you and designate the spaces that are in your lease, but make sure you show us what ones are available to your clients?
I don't know, I don't remember whether our lease actually had it, it might have had that as an exhibit, whether it was, which specific ones. The lease is specific, though, to say that we're guaranteed, you know, kind of a minimum of 20 spaces.
I'll reflect that on the...
I don't know whether we actually ever said, these are ours, exactly.
Okay. But just mention that on the plan, that you have a guarantee of 20 in your lease, and these others are available to us, to, to us, for our patients or, or our clients.
Okay. I'm happy to do that, and I think, I'm not, I don't remember if we, did we, I think we provided the lease, not in the booklet you have, but I don't remember what, do you remember if, I think we provided the lease?
Yeah, I definitely have it in this folder. I don't know if everyone else got a copy.
I'll, I'll make sure I do that.
And the other thing is, I know, I've seen the site, and I know the landscaping that's there, and you mentioned in your, your presentation that you may adjust the landscaping based on what's going on on the site. But there needs to be a landscape plan that shows all landscaping on your part of the site as part of the, the application.
Well, the, there's nothing changing in the landscaping from what exists today.
Well, I want to see the landscaping on the...
So you want to see where the different, where the different tree planting things are? Okay. And would you like us to get that to you before the meeting, or bring it to the meeting?
Bring it to the meeting. I just, I know what's on the site, I just want to see it in plan form.
Actually, if you get it before the meeting, it'd be helpful, sir.
Yeah.
You know, it's also, you need to be what the current landscape plan is. But if we could have it before the meeting, that'd be helpful.
I'll have to lean on Dave Damaris to see if he can get it to me quickly.
Yeah, no problem.
The planner boxes are shown, that's the, that's the only landscaping we put in ourselves, but the other, but I will, do you want it on, only around our dispensary, or everything on the, that's related to Segway?
Just what you would, you deal with around your building.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else, Bob?
Nothing else.
Nothing else, okay. The only comment I would have is, I think it's a good idea, what you talked about having maybe an extra guard there, I think, especially for the onslaught of, because on what the traffic may be. Some of the concerns we got, I'm sure you got a copy of these, Bob, from staff, and when the question was, you know, what type of parking, something show up there? But I think if you had a staff member out there to begin with, just to handle the initial traffic onslaught, like you said, the first six months or a year, I think that'd be very helpful. And obviously, you know, you could tell by the time of day, when the person's needed outside, when they're needed inside. But if you have to help people just get in and out of traffic flow a lot faster, that could be a lot helpful for you, you know? And then, like you say, if you have people loitering around the site, you don't want that, you want to...
No, we want them gone, when they're gone.
Mr. President, the guy alone will help take care of it.
I mean, there's, they're not allowed to, you know, you're not allowed to use the product on premises, and we, we just, again, we can't afford for there to be a problem with that, not just from the city's perspective, or from the state perspective, or our perspective, so.
I mean, just a sight of that guard outside, but helping forth that a lot easier, without even saying a word, you know? The presence of that person to help with the traffic and just, you know, make sure people aren't loitering, then that would be helpful.
Okay.
I know this is not a public hearing, but anybody here this evening have any questions on this project? If they do, you can ask us, and we'll ask Bob, so that way he might, he'll have to give us the answer before he comes back.
See you in a couple of weeks.
Actually, Bob, could you leave your cell phone number with our staff, so if we do want to call you?
Uh, I'll make sure, yeah.
Is it Patrick? You want to just give it to him?
Yeah.
You have to give it to us.
Yeah, I feel, I mean, anytime between now and then.
Sure. Give it to Patrick, so if we do want to come by, or somebody has a concern to reach out to you ahead of time.
Say that again?
Yeah, if you want to give it to Patrick, he can give it to us. If one of us have a concern, we'll reach out to you.
And if you, and again, if you want to take me up on the offer to, to see, be more than happy anytime.
If we do, we'll discuss that, you know, and that way, just leave him your cell phone number, if you want to reach out, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I know. Thank you, laying right down.
Sir, if you'd like to speak on time with the back.
Yep.
Actually, will you pull that up a little bit, if you want?
Sure.
If anybody wants to see it.
Yep.
Along in the agenda, we have pre-application for a site plan review at 667 and 705 Patacet Boulevard. The following individuals have requested the planning board provide a preliminary review of the proposed project. This is not a public hearing. The planning board will not render any decision on this matter. May we hear? Excuse me, so the, it is, the project is redeveloping a former drive-in movie theater parcel of land to construct a new 69,000-square-foot supermarket and a 12,000-square-foot retail space. Zoning is suburban mixed-use, and it will require a site plan review from the planning board if it comes in for a site plan requirement. May we have the applicant, please?
Good evening. Thank you very much. My name is Eric Girard. I'm a civil engineer with VHB. I'm here tonight with Jim Lamp and Greg Curtis, representing the applicant, as well as Rob Nagy, our lead transportation engineer. We're here tonight to introduce the board to the project at 667-705 Patacet Boulevard, the redevelopment of the old drive-in movie theater parcel. Included in this is also the existing restaurant parcel located at the corner of Old Ferry and Patacet Boulevard. We're proposing to improve the lot with a new supermarket use and small retail, as well as maintaining the existing restaurant with overall site, landscape, utility, stormwater management improvements at the property. The project will require three curb cuts on Old Ferry, the rear and two in the front, while closing off an access that is at the existing J.J. Boomer's Restaurant at their service that is closer to the intersection. Additionally, we'll be maintaining or reopening the, there's an existing curb cut at the main entrance to the frontage for Patacet for the larger parcel, and then maintaining a ride-out for the J.J. Boomer's Restaurant. The site is approximately 14.3 acres for the combined two parcels. It is zoned in the suburban mixed-use. It's located at the intersection of Patacet Boulevard and Old Ferry. It's bounded by a fraternal organization to the north, there's the Bollin Alley to the east, Patacet Boulevard to the south, and Merrimack River is just on the other side, and then Old Ferry Road to the west. There's no wetland resources on the property. We are within the 100-year floodplain of the Merrimack River, so we will be required to go before conservation and file a notice of intent. Additionally, the project will require a curb cut variance with the zoning board of appeals due to the increased width over, I believe it's 24 feet, that's going to be required. We have done preliminary geotech back in 2016, and additionally supplemented that with test pits with a soil evaluator this past spring, actually about a month ago, to confirm the assumptions made during the preliminary design. Our preliminary design and review has already included the review with the state through the MEPA process. We filed the ENF, the draft environmental, and then the final environmental impact reports. We received our final certificate about two months ago. As part of that report, we analyzed major environmental impacts that are associated with a project of this scale that were required to go before the state, primarily included the trip distribution that the traffic will generate to this property. The state was satisfied with the mitigation measures that we had proposed for both traffic. We worked with the city through some traffic review, preliminary review with the city with meetings, in addition with the floodplain, with the mitigation requirements required through the Conservation Commission. We haven't formally submitted to conservation, however, we have met, and we met with Mike Stor at the Lowell Wastewater Utility last week to review the stormwater management with him and the impacts of the floodplain. They seemed pretty satisfied and happy with the approach that were taken. The proposed project is, it's going to, we're showing a large 72,500-square-foot supermarket and a 12,000-square-foot pad retail adjacent to it. And the associated parking lot, currently, we are showing approximately 599 parking spaces to support the supermarket and retail use. Loading is all contained in the rear of the property. There'll be two loading docks, kind of a butterfly configuration along the backside. We have pulled the backside of the property towards Patacet due to an existing easement that's at the rear of the property, that is to service for a future access for, I believe it's the Buddhist property to the northeast. So all our improvements are staying outside of that easement. I previously discussed the floodplain that is associated with this project. Rob, if you could change the next graphic. So we know flooding is a major concern along this corridor due to the proximity of the Merrimack River. There is residential areas in the neighborhood as well, and we know this area has flood, is prone to flooding, and it will flood again in the future. As part of our noticement intent filing, the state requires us to mitigate on a foot-by-foot basis for any impacts that we are going to have within that floodplain. So this, this graphic here shows, there's a red hatch kind of jagged that goes across the property, and there's some back here. That's the existing floodplain limits on our datum. It goes up to elevation 155. In the blue limits are our proposed mitigation measures. So to build the store, we need to bring our site up a little bit. The finished floor of that building needs to be as high above the floodplain as possible. Building code, and then as well as the MEPA review process, they asked us to get it for our future resiliency measures. So the finished floor is sitting at three feet above the flooding elevation, and to get the parking lot and accessible spaces and all that to work, there's only a certain percentage of slope that you can come off that front of the building. So it requires us to fill it, fill in the floodplain a little bit closer to the store, and as we're getting away from the store, it allows us to dive it back down. So we are mitigating that elevation on a foot-by-foot basis per the state regulations. And that will be reviewed throughout the conservation noticement intent process. DEP will also be looking at the submittal. The drainage, we're proposing surface basins to comply with the mass DEP stormwater regs. Since we are moving in with the notice of intent, we are pulled into the stormwater management regulations. We explained all this to the Lowell Regional Wastewater Utility. They support the efforts we're making. Everything does comply, and you can see on the plan, Everything does comply, and you can see on the plan, we are proposing a few larger basins. And this is to get the treatment train that's required for the state for the stormwater management. So we got to pre-treat the water before we do a final treatment, so we have a series of basins to achieve that. And we are significantly reducing flow that is going to off-site properties to our butters. So we are holding the water on our property, allowing it to infiltrate into the ground. And then we do have two outfalls, two outlets at each of these larger basins that are connected into the municipal network. Lowell Regional Wastewater Utility was happy to see that, just so there isn't a, you know, an outlet valve in the event of a larger storm. Our proposed measures are showing that we aren't increasing any of those peak rates coming off in either direction. So we are reducing, we are complying with the regs, providing the applicable water quality treatment and groundwater recharge that is required. Utility connections for the property, the existing J.J. Boomers, those will remain as-is. For the new Market Basket building, they will be all primarily handled in the rear of the facility, serviced off of Old Ferry Drive, Old Ferry Road. We will have a roof drain collection system to handle all the rooftop runoff that will go direct into that basin, and that is pretty much the only closed drainage piping network that we have on the property, just due to the groundwater and floodplain balance. That's how we're going to achieve our stormwater management. So I mentioned previously the traffic. We did prepare a traffic study as part of the MEPA review. State reviewed it, and part of the final certificate, there is a section sixty-one findings requiring some mitigation. So we are, the proponents committed to improvements at the Old Ferry and Varnum intersection to the north, as well as the intersection at Patacet and Old Ferry. And yeah, as mentioned, we will be coming before the planning board submitting a formal application in a couple of weeks for a site plan review. And then we also will be going in for a conservation commission for the notice of intent due to the floodplain impacts and stormwater management, as well as EBA for the variance for the curb cut and potentially for interior illuminated signage, which we're still evaluating. So we'd like to open it up to any questions that, you know, we can incorporate into the final submittal. Yeah, we feel like we have a very positive project to move forward with.
Thank you. Any board members have any questions?
I have a couple. Are there any provisions for pedestrian walkways for people that may walk to the facility?
Absolutely. So we are proposing new sidewalk connection into the facility, into the project, with a sidewalk connection, and then there'll be a sidewalk cutting through the interior parking field to the building, as well as improved sidewalk in connection to the existing sidewalk on Old Ferry.
Okay, so in both directions.
And that will all be detailed in the traffic study, that will be formally submitted.
Excuse me, there is a small cemetery located adjacent to the site, could you point that out? And have you considered what may happen with that, or what?
So the.
Is this verbiage in our documentation about, you know, archaeological finds and what may happen there? Can you address that?
Yeah, so the applicant has reviewed that area in depth. The property, we are staying outside of the limits. If during construction anything does come up, they're, you know, committed to notifying the appropriate people and doing the right thing. There's the opportunity where we can, you know, potentially dedicate a parking space if someone wanted to go visit that cemetery, because we realize that there is limited access. There's only a few, a couple easements or footpaths in that general area.
Okay. Very good, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Lockhart. Any other board members have any questions? Mr. Fischach?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, obviously, I think there's a tremendous amount of opportunity with this proposal, and certainly, I think, I think there's a lot of residents on the, on that side of the river that would welcome the, well, what that will provide having a grocery store. However, with that comes some challenges, so there's challenges and opportunities, and they're, and it's a large-impact development, once again, in a sensitive location. Once again, this particular area was hotly contested in the formation of the Patacetville master plan. And matter of fact, the planning department and the committee agreed to disagree in that particular area. And the, what I will read to you is, at the very least, what the planning department agreed and the committee agreed upon, and we were looking to form a suburban waterfront district out of this SMU zone, which never developed. But what we did agree on was, there were several elements, and three key, I think, to this project here is provide the highest quality of landscaping and architectural design, enhance pedestrian and bicycle access to the waterfront, and then traffic must not overburden neighborhood streets. And we at least in principle agreed with those elements. And the committee had concerns with residential development. Matter of fact, we had, Judge Porikis was here at the time, and we had them draw up what is the worst possible scenario that could end up on that site. And the height of the buildings was a problem in the SMU zone, which has never been resolved. So from that perspective, I think, I, this is a good proposal based on some other options that were out there. But the, and I know you have the letter from Patrick, which you'll be addressing for the full application. And he does mention, and I can't stress enough, again, this is, West Patacetville is the most suburban zone in the city of Lowell as a whole. And we have the State Forest, Regatta Field, Rolleys Farm, the Holmes. Most of that area is a suburban, single-family zone, and trees are very important. And I walked the Bridge Street Market Basket today and counted sixty-nine trees that were planted on that, and thank God for Conrad Gothier, because he really twisted some arms on that one. But I think everybody can be very proud about the finished product that sits there on Bridge Street. And here's a good example. We have on that boulevard examples of horrendous, and not the fault of the development at the time, because that really was the development trend, but nineteen-fifties, nineteen-sixties auto-oriented development along that boulevard. You tell me that looks attractive. Nobody can stand here and tell me that looks attractive. So here's an opportunity, here's a tremendous opportunity. Now, you've got J.J. Boomers, which you own, and you're making part of this proposal as well. But that whole strip, that used to be, I mean, referred to affectionately as Lover's Lane, and you had the waterworks. I have home movies of my grandfather going up and down there on a selkie with his horse in nineteen fifty-eight. What you had is, what you had was a stand of trees in between the boulevard and what was called Lover's Lane at the time, okay? And that site was cased too. It was a pink building, and we had a driving range, and you had the Lowell Drive-In. Here's an opportunity to kind of recreate that feel. And when you look at that, it's a barren wasteland. If you look at that parking lot of J.J. Boomers right now, it really is. I'm, I would ask you to redesign the front of that, what's on Patacet Boulevard, and we really would like to see some trees along there. And the site itself, again, we have sixty-nine trees that I counted on the site on Bridge Street, so I would implore you to really put as many trees on this site as possible. Patrick has that in his letter as well, and it's part of the MEPA comments as well. So I would implore you to take that to heart. The, a little concerned, obviously, you're trying to come up above the flood elevation. I was going to ask you if you're going to have a flow-through foundation, and just, obviously, you're not. But I, obviously, the elevations that you're going to submit are going to be very, very important. And if it's all possible, because we've had large-scale development come before us, and it's a pet peeve over the years, where the elevations presented with some landscaping thrown in there looks beautiful, but has no correlation with the actual landscape plan that's presented. And for us to really have a true visual, and especially if you're going to really, I think the profile of that building is going to be a little bit more unusual than the typical Market Basket, I suspect, because of dealing with the flood elevation. I, please make sure that what is presented to us is also what you're presenting as a landscape plan, to visually help this board make a decision on that.
It's like a rendering kind of view perspective?
Correct, yes.
Real estate, yep.
And then the, you know, we, when the charter school was presented to us on Middlesex Street and Walgreens was presented to us on Middlesex Street, right across the river with the Rook Bridges, we required in both instances a peer review of the traffic study. And I just think it was so helpful. Even the city's traffic engineer commented how helpful it was to that individual. It was helpful to this board. And this is a, this, I mean, obviously, you had to file the MEPA, go through the MEPA process because you crossed all the thresholds for, that required that. So I think at the expense of the applicant, we would be looking for, I would be looking for a peer review, and I would be, my colleagues would want to see that. And again, it's about making the best, this is an opportunity. And, you know, it's a, it's a large-impact development. Sometimes the tendency is, it's a positive development, so nobody wants to appear like we're giving you a hard time. This is an opportunity, and we want to do it right. And quite frankly, the truth of the matter is, there's going to be some negative effects to this neighborhood, regardless whether we get it right or not. It's a fact, and that's, it's a large-scale development. And so any kind of traffic mitigation on Old Ferry and Varnum Ave, you know, we looked at that, the Country Mills property where those condos are, right at the, facing the Old Ferry and Varnum. At that time, the city was trying to negotiate maybe some traffic lights from the development developer. And I'll tell you, the residents around it didn't want a traffic light there because it's going to change the whole character, whole character. Right now, it's a, it's a country road where people, it's a major road, but the traffic keeps flowing. But it's dangerous now, the traffic warrants are there, and would, I suspect, warrant signalization. But now, if you live there, you go to back out of your driveway, now you're going to have a line of cars, you're waiting for the light to change to back out. So that's, you know, that's just fact that we have to deal with. So from that perspective, I would welcome the help of a peer review. I think it'd be extremely helpful in trying to get that right. And I think we need to look at, Patacet Boulevard, there's a lot of events that go on there. And we did a lot of traffic mitigation issues several years ago along there, and we took into account special events going on along that boulevard. And one of them, to be honest with you, that's really ballooned into something that, it all depends how you view it, but that motorcycle night is, is, really has a large impact on that boulevard. And when you have something like that going on, and actually, the cars are parked, at one time, there was no parking along the Patacet Boulevard, and all those signs disappeared. So you've got, and you literally have a couple hundred motorcycles going up and down that boulevard and turning around where, you know, the, where your entrance is going to be up and around there. I think all of that has to be looked at, and we've got some serious safety issues that possibly could arise from that. So from that perspective, again, I have nothing but compliments on how Market Basket responded to our requests and the neighborhood's request on Bridge Street, and that's my personal involvement here on the board. The chairman can go back several decades, I believe, on some other projects. And I don't know how this compares square footage, but this is going to be one of your larger, larger stores, acreage-wise, I suspect, yeah. And so from that perspective, it's a great opportunity. That has been an unsightly location for quite some time, and here's a great opportunity to really help it fit into the suburban, suburban zone that currently exists there. So those are my comments. Again, there's a lot of good comments within Patrick's letter as well. I know Mr. Lockhart had some questions regarding the Clay Pit Cemetery. And obviously, if we can have some sensitivity towards that as well, I think would be helpful. That's a unique situation where you have that, that site is really a historic site right along, right along your property. So again, would implore you to show some sensitivity to that as well. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Mr. Snatsky?
Yes, my, I believe most of the comments have been already covered by my colleagues, but the one that I do want to reiterate is, you know, traffic mitigation. You know, there's no question, there's going to be an impact, and anything that can be done to mitigate that, I find extremely important. You know, I understand we have now have a new traffic engineer on board with the city. I would strongly recommend that you make, you know, reach out and through the planning department and meet with that engineer for their input, because that's always something that, you know, we, you know, look towards, you know, you know, our own traffic engineer for their input, and that coupled with the peer review that's been recommended, you know, hopefully, we can come up with the best possible solutions to, you know, an impact we know is going to be there, but the best we can do to mitigate it, you know, I think is incumbent upon all of us. So that would be my main concern.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Malvich?
Yeah, I have a question on the intention of the base and the infiltration. Do those, how are those, are those depressed?
Correct, they will be depressed. And due to the recent groundwater, the test pits that we did to confirm the seasonal high groundwater, which is required when you propose an infiltration, the bottoms actually came up from our initial MEPA submittal. So those basins are actually a little shallower. They're only two and a half feet deep, so they will, they are slight depressions, but they're not going to be massive, you know, six-foot-deep-plus basins holding water. So those are designed to drain. The state requires them to drain within seventy-two hours following a storm event, so those aren't going to be holding water.
Are you doing any detection around them or are they?
Yeah, we'll be looking at landscaping around them. Can't get too close with, you know, large trees to some of the berms, just because the roots start eroding them away. Otherwise, yeah, we typically can put fences around them, depending on the depths, so we can evaluate where those fences would want to be.
Are you going to be very attractive to the water? See, I have a thing, I agree with Evan, the test of, one of the key things, like, the more trees you can put on this parking lot site, the better. And the design of the building is going to be in character with the neighborhood.
Yeah, we show them what's.
Can we show you? Okay, yeah, after the question, we got some preliminary elevation views, if you'd like to see. The landscaping's not incorporated, but we do have some typical elevation views.
I'd like to see the.
Jim Lamp, I'm an house engineer with Market Basket. I was here for the Bridge Street project, and I'd like to go back to that a little bit because that was an extremely challenging project to keep a store open, build a new store, and to miss the old store, and very tight. We had a lot of tenants that we had to accommodate, so we ended up squeezing that site. We're so happy to have a location at Lowell where there's a lot more open space than is even required by the regulations. So if you look back, when we go back, you'll see, I mean, this is going to be a very, very green site. And we've learned a lot, that's ten years ago, Bridge Street, nine years. Our landscaping, I would welcome anybody to go visit, you know, say, like, our Bedford, New Hampshire store. New Hampshire store, our new Lynn store, the Waltham store on 128. That's where our landscaping is heading. These things are, they're very well landscaped and we're very proud of the growth that we've done in that area and how we develop our sites. This is the store on Pawtucket. This is one look, this is a more modern look, these have not been, been chosen, but it's a more modern look for the store. And then if you flip that over, Rob, there's another look that's more, hearkens back to a little bit more of the, the mill type building. So we don't know where it's going to go, it might be a version of one of the others, I hear you loud and clear, Mr. Farchett. But it's, the architecture has actually changed a lot from Bridge Street as well, if you go look at, you know, again, Waltham or Lynn would be great examples of what we do here with a lot of brick and texture to it, so. And this would be the first store in Lowell that would have full service, so it'd have the cafe, the market's kitchen, the meat shops and whatnot. So this is a, this is a 70,000, you've heard some different numbers, 69 is what we had on the original plan. We're looking at a six foot expansion, just give a little more space out by the registers. So it, it might expand by 1,800 square feet or so, but it's right in that, that 70,000, 71. Our typical, if we had a typical, it's 80,000 square feet. So this is a downsized store. And the other thing that we'd like to show you is, is there have been questions about our Wood Street store. The intention is to keep that open and we're going to try to reface that store as well almost at the same time. So we're hoping that this relieves some of the pressure on Wood Street, parking's always been tight there. We're actually looking at possibility of reworking the parking lot, getting a little bit more green space, which there is none, on that to, to landscape and create at least a, a strip where the guardrail, where the sidewalk, the guardrail and the parking is right on, on the street there. So if you want to flip that over, there, there's two, again, these are preliminary looks, I apologize, we clipped it over, but, you know, it's a tough store to work with, but we're trying to, you know, just resurface it and give it a little bit of a dress up. So that's one look on, there's, there's one other that is a more basic look on, that shows a little bit more of the center. So our intention is to upgrade the site, rework the parking lot, do it in unison or close to when we're working on the Pawtucket site.
I mentioned to the chairman that I had, I had one more question, you just answered it, so that's good.
Okay. And on the, on the parking, I, I understand that, you know, this is a commercial use and a relatively residential area. What I would request is that we'll be allowed to work through the planning staff and with the new traffic engineer. And I think we'd like to request that we look more at the rural streets versus revisiting what's gone through on the, on the state controlled highways and roadways, because that's already been vetted by the state, the state really acted as your reviewing engineer. But we understand that there's stuff locally that the city will have better knowledge on than the state, and we can look at those, those streets and would gladly have a review on that. Thank you.
On that, on that point that you've just raised, you know, my main concern was Old Ferry and the impact it's going to have on the Varnum Ave end as well, even, even as much or even greater extent to the impact that it's going to have on the Pawtucket side. Because that's going to impact the neighborhoods the most.
Anything further this time?
If it is going to move into a peer review, is that something that could get set up ahead of the next, you know, the formal submittal? How does that typically, I guess, work?
I believe so, I'm actually not entirely sure how that works, if you can do it before the public hearing process is.
Or concurrent with the filing? I know sometimes it's, you get a vote on it to actually get initiated and that you lose a couple of weeks trying to get that escrow account going.
I think we have the provision now to accept the.
I mean, when we did it before, it came in and it was after the applicant came forward, then we requested it and, actually, we did it twice and both times they had no problem with it. And then what happened was, actually, it was the same person who worked with it both times. And it was right in that same location, so he knows the stuff inside and out.
Okay.
But I mean, basically, I know, I think we, we requested it at the, at the public hearing.
Okay.
He answered a question, yeah. I don't think we did it at the pre-application.
No, right, right, it was at the public hearing, yeah.
I think the first time it came up was when.
I think actually Walgreens, because it was Mr. Clamont, Joe Clamont, and that was at the, I think that was at the pre-application, now that I think about it, yeah.
I think he asked at the Charter School when it first came in, right?
Yes.
And then the other one, okay. So usually, I know, right, unfortunately, we don't have a traffic engineer right now.
Well, we have one that just started today, actually.
Oh, starting today?
Yeah.
I know in the memo it said maybe shortly, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would be the beneficial part.
Great.
So usually what we, we would get is, you know, comments from your engineer, traffic engineer, comments from our traffic engineer. And then if we get the third person in line, like they did on other ones, mitigate a whole bunch of things and they all, three of them come up with what everybody thought was a good solution.
That's the cemetery that.
But that's, could be something you can speak with further without traffic engineer.
Sounds good.
Patrick can let you know who that is. And the person who did the study on both the Walmart and the Charter School, just side of the other side of the Rook Bridge, it was Jeffrey Dirk from, and he, he has all that analysis as we speak, because he did both of them for us.
Great, all right.
I mean, he knows, he knows a lot of it because he did the history and actually, as part of the requirements we put on the Charter School, they had to come back each year and give us the update on what that traffic signal is on the other side of, of the Rook Bridge, which is going to affect you guys both ways, because you have a Market Basket and multiple lines of Rook Bridge. So that signal there is going to be tested every six months to a year, we have them coming back. So that signalization is very important, what they did before was signalization there to cooperate with the signalization on the other side of the bridge where you folks are preparing to come in, because at first, that light there wasn't coinciding with the one on the Patacaville side. So a lot of those things, by synchronizing and putting their heads together, they checked off a whole bunch of 10 things and just boom, boom. And the main important thing they, what they did do on the, on the Walgreens there was, they put accelerating lane going in over to the Rook Bridge, which before, everybody said it's not going to work. Everybody come in here and yelled and screamed at us. And slowly, people admitted that it did work, but they were very hesitant to come out and tell us. But time did prevail and it does work, so. So whether, I mean, because that was, that whole area fled now and going into the Rook Bridge, which was going to be a problem. And as a result, when we did the follow-up in the Charter School, when we got the information further, that's where we found out that the mitigating of the traffic was working, because therefore we had different data to go by from what we had previously until we, until the Charter School came back in. So that's what was helpful in that point. So under that situation, all three of them got together and mitigated a lot of stuff that really made the whole situation work better. I think the Charter School was in a different situation to begin with, because at the time, that was, that property was, was set out to bid by the city and approved by the city and the city council, and the traffic engineer worked for the city, so we wanted somebody independent to help in the peer review. Because part of that was invested by the city as well as selling the land to begin with. So that was kind of like, one of the thinking of the attorneys on the board at the time says, let's just get the neutral party and get the whole thing together, and it worked out much faster. To the benefit, so. But having said that, does anybody here this evening have any questions or want to say anything in regards to it?
John, can I start with you?
Thank you, sir. I know it's not a public hearing, but a lot of times I let them speak because it's beneficial to you, because when they come back, they might be here, asking the same questions. So therefore, I figured it helps the applicant and everybody else while they're here, so.
I'm going to, I'm going to just take this opportunity to introduce ourselves, because I don't know any of these guys and they, they don't know me. My name is John Hamlet and I'm co-chair of the Pawtucketville Citizens Council. We are your neighborhood. And we have been around, I think, longer than any of the other neighborhoods. Certainly, we're considered one of the most active, or some people might say we're one of the noisiest. We enjoy fabulous relationships with organizations and businesses in Pawtucketville such as UMass Lowell, Lowell General, Deuville. And usually, when there are plans to expand or build, we're brought into very early in the game, much earlier than this. And so I think the citizens of Pawtucketville will have a lot of questions. The questions I have are just John Hamlet's, I'm not representing the 12,000 citizens of Pawtucketville. Traffic, traffic, traffic. My address is 495 Varnum Avenue. And that's important because that's where all the cut-through traffic from Old Ferry goes, down Varnum and they turn by my house on West Meadow Road. There are going to be a lot of concerns about traffic, increased traffic, cut-through traffic. We have asked all of our partners, for example, to direct truck traffic away from Varnum Avenue. If you come out of Lowell General Hospital, trucks must turn left and go down on the boulevard. If you're coming out of Deuville, they turn left and turn right on Old Ferry. So we are going to be looking to Market Basket to make it clear to all of their vendors that Varnum Avenue is not a road that they're going to be using. We're going to be asking for some traffic calming. It's crazy out there now, it's about to get crazier. Varnum Avenue and I believe Old Ferry do not have sidewalks on both sides. And so that's going to be a consideration that we're going to be raising. Dr. Davidson brought up a good point. This is going to be a very attractive store for UMass Lowell students. Just get on your bike and go straight down the boulevard. And I would be prepared for some heavy bike traffic, I don't know what your marketing has shown, but how many students do we have on campus now? 8,000, something like that? And half of them are on our side of the river. So if I were part of the Market Basket marketing team, I'd be looking into all of those. 2006 and 2007, we had two 100-year floods, we remember that like yesterday. 72 homes were damaged or lost. We are very well-known by the Conservation Commission and they do not understand de minimis. We measure flood storage compensation by the teaspoon. So we're very serious about that. And we ask our partners whenever possible to create more flood storage than fill. I, I heard something, I'm still shaking from it, did you, did you mention access from the north? To this, from Varnum Avenue?
Could you put the other mask?
Good, okay, because the answer to that is over my dead body. Access to the cemetery.
I think he only said, maybe John was, but that the.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm going to get to that, too.
I think he had what, in the backwards where the trucks were coming in?
Yeah.
No, I mean, but the, but the trucks go behind the Market Basket, right? Right, yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
So I, I think, I think we've played down the cemetery. It is one of the oldest cemeteries in the area, it's possibly owned by the town of Drakot.
That's possible, they won't admit it.
They won't admit it. And, and I, I would like to see some type of consideration in terms of access to that, even limited, and I know some of that is not on your property, but, you know, no garbage trucks, no dumpsters, none of that stuff. Also, it is rumored that just south of that is a North American burial ground, so you'll want to keep that in mind. You've already taken care of the rumor about the Market Basket across the river. I'll be very interested to see what you're going to do about special events parking. The parking fills both sides of the boulevard, all the way up to School Street, halfway to Tingsborough, they park anywhere on Varnum that they can, including my driveway. I don't know, a big shopping lot, parking lot, it just, it just looks too good to be true. So I would be concerned about that. I saw some artists' renderings of the building, I don't want that building in Pawtucketville. Let me, let me just be clear. The, any of the buildings that you showed, that is not a suburban building, it is not what you'd put if you were building in Concord, it's not what you would put if you were building in Westford. I don't want to be taken advantage of because we're Lowell. So I'm hoping for something more attractive than that. Last but not least, there are two concerns that are related. One is, there's a resident on Townsend Avenue, we recently had the height of the river increased because of the new bladder dam, and therefore, the water table is now higher. And we now have videos of the machinery at 667 creating vibrations in glasses of water on the, on Townsend, which is the road next to yours. Just something to keep in mind, it could get worse before it gets better. And the other thing is that, as I understand it, the current gravel processing that's taking place on 667 is from the highway down the street, highway work down the street. And while the state is exempt from zoning laws, DSM is not, the processing of gravel and sand is not allowed in the SMU, it's not allowed at 667 Pawtucket Boulevard. So I would be, I would be, if I were DSM, very concerned about what kind of impression I'm making on the neighborhood, who I'm going to need to support my success. Those are just a few of my initial thoughts. Deb Forgeon and I would be happy to meet with you, we hope you're going to come to a Pawtucketville Citizens Council meeting and talk to us, preferably before you start the official channel, so you have an opportunity to get more neighborhood feedback. And I'll give you my, you've got my address, I can give you my telephone number and email so you can contact me. Just off the top of my head, those were a few of my concerns.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want, have any comments this evening? Anything they want to add?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would, I would implore the developer to have that meeting with the Pawtucketville Neighborhood Association. It would behoove you to do so before you come back, before this board, so that, you know, you can hopefully mitigate some of their concerns and they won't become an issue at the time of your site plan review.
Does somebody else have a question? Sir? You want to go to the microphone, please?
For the record, my name's Curtis Lemay, Forte Roberts, Street Lowell. Most of you know me here, I used to sit on the side of the aisle rail a few decades ago. I've lived in Pawtucketville all my life, I have been a member of the PCC for a number of decades. Public service is something I've always been involved with. I basically like to advocate relative to the Demoulis family. I've, I've worked hand-in-hand with them, Mike Kattonback, Mike Demoulis, now Adi. The apple didn't fall far from the tree, I can tell you that, because when it comes to development, I think those are the type of people that the city want to work with. Being from Pawtucketville, we've never had a, a store of considerable size. The biggest store that I remember was the AMP on Mammoth Road back in the 50s and 60s. We've probably been dying for development of such size and scope for that area for a long time. I think that the, the Moulis family, as well as these people, who I really don't know, but I, I think that they're willing, they'd be more than willing to come to the PCC meeting. And I, I know that they'll work with the community and with everything if they've done in the past, it's always been out that way, that they want what's good for the neighborhood. So I'm, I'm willing to work with them as, as much as the PCC and I, I feel pretty confident that's, that you don't, you don't get, as Mr. Farchett stated, the, the size of the scope, the acreage there, there's not many acreage parcels like that around. And as much as we'd like to see tax base and development, for a parcel that size, I, I think the number of citizens in Pawtucketville would really want to use that parcel as far as a, a store. The traffic, you know, it, it is what it is, but that's a major concern. what it is, but that's a major concern. I'm sure there's nothing we'd like more, or the Demoulis family would like more, to have that bridge taken care of next week. But if it comes to a tra, you know, I've, I've dealt with it before. If there's a traffic light needed, or there's a lane, or curbing, they're, they're prepared to do it. Traffic studies, everything. I've, I've seen it done. I've been there, done that with them. So, I think it's gonna be a good project, and I think they'll come around to the neighborhood's liking, and they'll be up the Pawtucketville Citizens Council, and look forward at working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have any questions?
I have one.
What, Mr. Malvich?
It's, it's your bailiwick. You know what you're doing with supermarkets. I notice there's not a lot of cot corrals on the parking lot. In fact, there's, but parts where there's not really a lot of them. I don't know, want, see if you could just take a second look at that, see if they're adequate, the number.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have one more.
Sure, Mr. Lockhart?
I would be prepared, I'm thinking of when Lowell General put up their new building up there. They had a very detailed plan during construction, and where trucks go, and, you know, the impact of that construction on the neighborhood. I'd be prepared to be able to answer questions relative to that, that would ensure the neighborhood and the people near there, you know, that they're in a safe environment, and you, as a developer, are conscious of their, their needs and so forth. That's all.
Anybody else? Anybody else in the audience? No? Yes. Tony Plunkett?
Good morning, Mr., good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name's Gregory Curtis.
Curtis, I'm sorry.
Members of the board, I've been a Lowell resident my whole life. I've also known the Demoulis family my entire life. And my grandfather had a barber shop down here on Dummer Street, and that whole area was Greeks for many years, and were all Greeks from way back. But if there's one thing I can say about the Demoulis family is that they do care about the neighborhoods. They've always cared about neighborhoods, and have always done the best they could for developing, whether it's been the acre, whether it's been out where I live in Belvedere, or whether it's been Centerville. I know Mr. Hamlet has strong concerns about how this development will turn out, but this is gonna be a positive impact for the Pawtucketville area. This is gonna be something that the people have wanted for a long time, and I think it can be worked out. We have no issues with meeting with the association, and we, we plan on doing that. The way this development will proceed, you know, we're on Pawtucket Boulevard. We're taking a piece of land that's been vacant for many years with a parking lot with J.J. Boomers that really wasn't doing much. It was pretty much an eyesore. And we're gonna develop that into a state-of-the-art site with a market that's gonna benefit not only people from Pawtucketville, but all the way up into Tingsborough. You have university people. And it may even alleviate some of the traffic that goes over the bridge to go to Wood Street, because you have a lot of people that go to Wood Street now. So, I think in the future, and once we're here in a couple of weeks, we can tweak plans and look at different things, but we'll try to set up a meeting with the Pawtucketville Residents Association to meet any needs that they have concerns about. But I really think this is gonna be a wonderful project. It's gonna really be a development that the city's gonna be happy about, and hopefully, take some of the burden off other areas. And again, we're in Pawtucket Boulevard. We're not on Varnum Avenue. We're hopefully not gonna be directing a lot of traffic onto Varnum Avenue. I don't think any truck traffic will be going on Varnum Avenue, but most of it will be coming down Pawtucket Boulevard, or coming down from the west or from the east. So, we look forward to that, and I think everybody will be happy with the final result. Thank you.
I know when we approved the Market Basket many years ago, with the expansion on the bottom of Clark Road in Tewksbury there, and actually, we were very fortunate to have Mike Demoulis present at that meeting with us, you know. And one of the concerns he had, that there'd be no type of main commercial vehicles going up Clark Road, going through the neighborhood. And today, it doesn't happen. If you look at the bottom of Clark Road, where it's in the Tewksbury line, there's actually a sign there saying, "No commercial vehicles going through there." So, when Mr. Demoulis said that those, those trucks would not be going up that way, we were very assured they wouldn't. And then, as they say, we have, we have a sign there saying that, "Don't go," and so it wouldn't flood the neighborhood. And as they said, you know, for them, in that location, the easiest way is to go right back out and get on the highway and go. And I remember Mr. Demoulis, one of the best quotes he ever said is, he said to Arthur Himm, who was the chairman at the time, who knew each other for a long, long time, he says, you know, "It's just engineering. Fix it." And that's what they did, and boom, the thing was great.
Thank you.
Yep. So, with that, I wish you well, and good luck with the project.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good luck.
That's good.
Moving along on the agenda, any of the board members have any further comment as a result of any of the boards in mind?
Storkwood activity is very quiet. Our next meeting is Monday, June 11th. Not sure what's on the agenda.
Will you be having the one over here?
Yeah, the Royal Theater was supposed to be in June. I'm not sure if that's...
Again, continue again.
No, I haven't heard from Steve, so.
Anything from that floor? No? Everything quiet?
Okay.
Further updates, for master concern? No? I know we have quite a few things on. Have you been sent it to us regularly for next meeting?
Yes, we have a long agenda for the, the 18th.
The 18th, yeah.
And you'll get everything.
Yeah. We have like five, four or five things on, I think it is.
Five or six.
Five or six, okay.
I'll be here, but that's the start of my vacation, but I'll be here.
Okay.
Six, one, seven.
If nothing further from the board, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion being second. Home favorite, say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Good night, and thank you, everyone.
To the jury.
Good luck.
Three, five, one, four.